I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, at seven o'clock. And I want to just indicate that in anticipation of the extension of the Executive Order 2020-17, the Nottingham Planning Board will be holding a virtual meeting. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access contemporaneously to listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. Anyone having difficulties during the meeting, please call Joanna. And that number is 679-9597. I'd like to just go around and see, make sure the board members are here. So I'll do a roll call. Ed Veale.
Present.
Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Gary Anderson.
Here.
Susan Mooney.
Here.
Tyler Eaton. Robert Davies.
Here.
Leanne Gast.
Here.
Well, we've got two board members or two seats not filled at this point. This one for Joe. I'm not sure who's turn it is, but whoever didn't go last meeting, but for
I think it's Leanne's turn.
Okay. So I'd like to seat Leanne Gast for Joe Clough, that has an absentee. So, Mr. Davies, you'll be as an alternate.
Thank you.
Let me start out the meeting by saying we are on a Zoom call. Those participating in the audio do have a chance to participate. And the instructions to participate during the public hearing process is either through checking the box that raises your hand in the computer software, or if you could just flag one of us, maybe by waving or something that indicates that you would like to speak. So at this point, we're ready to start the hearing. And the first one is, it's a continued case from 10/28/2020. This is Case 20006 SPR. It's an application from Devon Tyack requesting a site plan review for a horse boarding system with a future plan for training and riding lessons. The property is located at 108 Stage Road in Nottingham. It is identified as tax map 43 lot 34, sub lot A. And if someone, one of the board members can just give a summary from the last meeting to the site visit meeting, that would be helpful. Anyone that attended.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veale. So we originally heard this case about a month or so ago. And then we conducted a site walk. Some of the members conducted a site walk, public site walk, with the applicant to get a better idea of the location and the stables and where everything kind of sits. And this had previously been apparently a horse boarding business, but there was no site plan on file, which is kind of what necessitated this process for the applicant. At the last meeting, we kind of ended it where they were going to work with staff to kind of come up with some additional items that would satisfy our minimum requirements for us to be able to kind of make a motion and move forward for them.
So either Steph or Joanna, could you just step through those? What that communication has been?
Yeah, this is Steph Gassella. So I've been in contact with Devon. Her and I worked together to make sure that she fulfilled the rest of the requirements that were not waived. And in my opinion, everything that she submitted meets those requirements. And I think the board should have sufficient information to make a decision tonight.
Okay, great. I guess before we get into the decision-making process, is there waivers that need to be acted on? Or are we? I guess update me on whether we provided a waiver previously.
Yeah, so we did provide waivers at the last meeting for a number of items. And I believe we've received that in writing now. Yeah, so that those were, it was quite a few. But based on what's being proposed, it seemed appropriate. So I think the last thing we were waiting for was kind of more of a generalized sketch or plan that we could use for filing purposes.
Okay, and that's been provided. Steph, yeah, okay. So I guess at this point, we just entertain a motion unless there's discussion that needs to happen.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that this Mr. Veale, that we approved the site plan for Case 20-006-SPR.
A second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote for that motion. Leanne Gast.
Yes.
Susan Mooney.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Ed Veale.
Yes.
And Dirk Rottenheis says yes, so that's a unanimous decision. That site plan is approved. Thank you and good luck with your horse business.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And this is a conceptual review. And this is for Richard R. Cody and Mary Ellen Cody for a proposed additional unit building conversion from existing structure to existing Lyons Mill Condo Association. And the property is located at 18-24 Cooper Hill Road in Nottingham and is known as map 16 lot 5. And this is a conceptual review, which is a non-binding communication between the board and a potential applicant. And this helps provide the applicant with some guidance to making an application for modifications, whether it's a site plan or whether it's a subdivision. So this is a time when the applicant will provide some input and potentially have some questions of the board or I guess solicit some direction. So I turn it over to the applicant. Joanna, can you unmute Richard Cody?
Is that working now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yep, my name is Rich Cody, my wife, Mary Ellen. We purchased Lyons Mill condominiums about five years ago. There were six units and only five of them have actually been, you know, turned into residence. So presently, we own them all. And the number six unit is the one that we're taking a look at. It's on the documents that I provided, you see a site map that's kind of colored in orange. It's kind of the, that's the limited common area. And the buildings are yellow. There's a small, like 400 square foot detached building that we would like to make that into a residence. Some back in 19, in 2016, we hired a contractor and to put a foundation under that because the building was about to see its last day. So we would like to continue with the project and make that a unit that we could live in.
Okay, I brought the plan up on the screen. Hopefully, people can see this. So this is the concept that the applicant has provided.
Yeah, and the existing, yeah, you could see that the orange area, that's, they call that, I guess they call that a limited common area. I guess it kind of implies it goes along with, you know, with the number six unit. And that small building to the left is the one that we would like to make into a, or continue to make it into another condo or another unit, which is number six, which is defined on this site plan.
So I guess just a quick question. So is this yellow building number six or is this yellow building number six?
Well, they're all considered number six. So basically, it would be that detached building, that small one to the left is, you know, they just call it a detached building. And that's the one that we would, we'd like to turn to a residence. The other one is a multi-purpose building right now, basically used for storage. It's a garage, it's a big, long garage for the most part. But that's all considered Unit 6.
Okay, and just so I can get an understanding, the building that's sort of in the middle of this, this is currently existing now? I mean, it's
Yeah, it is, yep.
And there is not a building at this?
There is a, there is a building there.
Okay, so there is.
Yep, that's the one we put the foundation in under, back in 2016.
And so you're looking for guidance on turning this into a residence? Is this?
Yeah, that's, that would be our goal, to kind of complete the whole thing, you know, so that we have truly six units on the property. And I don't know if he's here or not, but they have Scott Freckowitz was gonna attend the meeting and maybe give some insight on how this could work out.
Yeah, that would be helpful if
Is he here? Can unmute him? I am here.
Okay.
So right now, the unit that Richard's talking about is the detached portion of Unit 6. It wasn't approved. When this was approved a while ago, there were six units approved, this being unit number six. Really, the biggest change he's looking for is any guidance. I don't think he has to go through subdivision again because this was part of that at the time. So I'm not sure if there's anything the planning board has to do or if it's just a matter of working with the building department. It appears that from the condo plans that were done by DuSet survey that there is enough loading capacity on the property to add more gallons per day. There's about 500 gallons per day of loading capacity, which this unit would be 300 gallons. So he could meet that with a septic in the, in the, the, one of the obstacles is finding a place to put a septic for this one unit. As I don't think there's capacity in the existing Leach Field to handle it, but there would be 300 gallons coming from this one, it would be a small system somewhere, probably within that limited common area for Unit 6.
Okay, and it looks like the existing septic system is here or is it in a different location?
That's where it was located on the, on those, on the 2000, whatever date those plans are, yeah. There was a plan prepared by Bill Wormaly, I believe the septic plan was prepared by Bill. And I believe that was submitted as well. If not, I got a copy of that I could show.
Yeah, I did submit that.
Yep.
So that septic handles units one through five. And then on the, on the plan, it shows no gallons coming from this unit six.
So the other units are, I guess, to the southwest a little bit.
Correct, there's, there's two buildings with the other five units in it. One of the things on this plan I'd like to just point out, and I'm not sure why that decision was made enough, but on note number eight on the plan, it says that the planning board determined they had no jurisdiction on this condo conversion back when it was done. If, on that plan, I think you have up right now, if you pan to the, to the right end of the note, no, I guess it's not that, yeah, it's
Yeah, it's that one, I think.
That note number eight. And typically, I mean, as you probably know, a condo conversion goes through the planning board for subdivision approval. So not sure why that was, that was determined.
Well, we can pull the minutes and find out what, if there's anything to know about that. So that's one, one piece of the puzzle to take a look at. And definitely since this was approved, the town has changed the wetlands ordinance, so the setbacks are different. You know, it would be a 50-foot setback to a structure. But since this structure is already in, then, you know, this, in approved in this fashion, then that wouldn't be an issue. In my opinion.
Okay.
Does any board members have any opinions on that?
Well, I think that, yeah, I think that would have to be looked at is to our setbacks for, you know, living spaces versus, you know, accessory structures. Accessory structures generally have a little bit more lenience, as Mr. Veale, than, than like a house does. So we'd have to look at that. I'd also be concerned about, I don't know what the distance there is to the North River. That is a, you know, protected river that flows it. But I don't know what that, that distance is. But again, getting, keeping septic systems out of the, any portion of the septic system out of that, that setback would be tight. I'd be curious, any idea, I know you weren't the owner then, but any idea why in 2007, this, neither of these structures were part of the conversion?
I have no, I have no, no information on that. It was just the way it was when we purchased the building, purchased the complex.
Because for me to add another, another residence, which, what this would be, into an undersized, you know, spot. So our zoning has changed significantly in the last 13 years. Sure. You know, when we do multifamilies and things of that nature, you know, this, this lot definitely is, is undersized for that, especially if you consider, there's probably, the upland area is probably pretty small, given that amount of setbacks that would be required from the North River and the wetlands that are associated there. So it would be hard pressed to, with that, without more information, obviously, to be able to go forward with another, another residence on that same parcel, in my opinion.
So you would treat a residence different than, let's say if it was a retail store kind of a thing or, or a wood shop or?
If it was an outbuilding like a shed, yeah, that's how it would be, or a garage, then converting that to a residence brings it to a little bit higher threshold.
Well, at one time, it did function as a retail kind of a store, if you can believe that. Yeah, there was, it was either manufactured or in, and sold retail of kilts, you know, in that building. But, you know, there was no restroom or anything out in there. But it has functioned as other things, I guess, in the, in the past.
Is it the distance from here?
So this distance is about 15. It's a pretty narrow distance between the edge of the building and then what was the edge of jurisdictional wetland. Obviously, that jurisdictional wetland was some 15, maybe 18 years ago, which is different now. So I, I think it would be good to at least understand where that edge is at this point and have that flagged by a wetland scientist, at least in the area where you might be doing that conversion. And then certainly what Mr. Veale had mentioned of, you know, not using any of that, that area close to the North River, obviously for septic. You know, and having that either in the lower area or away from, yeah, away from the river itself.
So do you think if we could find an acceptable place for the septic system, that there may be a chance that you would allow that to become a residence?
Well, I can't say yes or no.
Right, right. Is the septic the key to this?
I mean, in my opinion, in my opinion, that's a piece, but this is Mr. Veale again. But the total, the total lot is, I believe, what, a little over two acres? Is that correct?
Right.
It's a little over two acres, there's already five residences on the parcel. To try to add a sixth, under current zoning, it, to my opinion, it doesn't, doesn't meet the current zoning. You would have to go for a variance for a number of different items, most likely. One is lot size and possibly upland and then buildable area contiguous uplands.
Isn't there a question with the acres?
I don't know if this is the place to do it.
Yeah. Well, just because you brought it up.
All right, well, it sounds like there's, there's a lot to think about here. And I guess the key question would be if we're overloading the lot, right? So you're not, you don't feel, you don't feel like that, with the acreage that we have here, that we should allow another, maybe not have another unit on there?
Well, I guess, I mean, what is, I don't see the lot acreage listed anywhere, is that?
Well, you know, it, you know, it's funny, on our tax bill, it actually shows it as three acres. And on the, on the plot plan here, it shows it as
It's shown at the top of the plan. Right to the, right there.
Okay, yeah, just a little over two.
Yeah, a little over two. So I don't know why our tax bill says three acres.
It would depend on what the deed said originally. It probably said three plus or minus acres.
Yeah, okay. So
And if it hasn't been surveyed, then that wouldn't have been changed.
Well, isn't this a represent, represent a survey?
Yes, that's, that's a full survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd want to go to assessing with that. And then they could guide you through the process of getting that updated.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right.
I guess, let, let me ask a question about access. Where do the vehicles access in and out? Is this a driveway?
Exactly, yeah, that's the driveway.
Here, is there, there's other access, it looks like, here?
That's, that's, that's a lower level right there.
Okay.
So there's parking there in a lower level. And then this is an upper level where you are right now.
Yeah.
Where there's a driveway and parking there. You can see the driveway kind of loops around, goes in front of the outbuilding, goes in front of the multi-purpose building and then out to Cooper Hill.
Maybe there was a parking over there.
Where would you, where would the proposed parking for the, for this one be?
They're already designated on the plan right there next to the multi-purpose building.
Okay. Yeah, one, 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 okay, I see him.
So is there, so there is no plumbing in this building at all? Yeah, so I think also just consult with the, the code officer, just to make sure that, you know, if there is a conversion, there isn't the building code issue that might come to light. So I'd recommend you talking with the building department.
Okay.
So that would be our next step?
That's Dale?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right then.
So what would be our next step with the building department?
Would building department be our next step?
Well, I think so, but also, you know, finding out where you would think of putting the septic and how far away from North River it could be to meet, you know, the regulations currently.
But Dirk, that, that would not be with the town, that would be with the state, correct?
The septic setbacks, yes. I mean, it would have to meet state septic.
It also has to go through Dale for approval before it goes to the state as well. I do have a question for the, for Mr. Cody or for the board. What, I don't, and I'm just throwing out it because I don't see a reason to go to the planning board on this application. It's more code and potentially zoning board. But with this already being a subdivided unit of a condo project, is there, is there a reason for him to come to the planning board?
It would, it would, it could be if there's, if this is a change of use. I mean, the change of use would be, you know, this clearly was not a residence, you know, or planned as a residence when it was approved.
Right.
And nor was it built as a residence, there's no plumbing, there's no, you know, it may be a commercial building or a storage building or, you know, something similar to what the other Unit 6 is. So it, you know, it's, it's a different use that's being
It might be a change of use application or?
Okay.
But since the actual structure itself was approved and built, there's not a lot that the planning board can do with the current regulations for setbacks from the jurisdictional wetland. Because that would fall under a wetland overlay district. But that was not in place at the time of this approval.
Okay.
So there's just some, some guidance. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm just, if you could help us like with where you would go, where we would go for the next step? Like what, what are the steps that we would, we should take? Should we go, should we find out about zoning first or codes and go to the zoning board or, I don't know?
Yeah, so I think
Or do we go to the planning board?
I think with, between myself and staff, we can probably provide a little bit of research and then give you guys some, some better guidance on whether on whether this is needing a planning board application. Or if it's you know, a a zoning issue, but we'll have to just do a little bit of research now, knowing some of the the information that you're providing. So I would I would say, give us you know, a few days and we'll work with you on trying to map out a correct path.
Okay.
That'd be great.
It's gonna have a couple of spots where it, um, you know, it depends on where it falls under zoning, you know, if it's considered a multifamily development because that specifically mentions that includes condominiums, and that has to be on site approved by the planning board. Or or if that's the proper section, and then, so it could be, I I think, because it's a little bit more unique than than some of the others that we've seen, that a little bit further review on staff's time to try to guide you in the right direction. So you're not spending too much money and and spinning your wheels, getting bounced around between boards. It sounds like the chairman and the building inspector and and maybe our staff will will be of some assistance on helping you, helping guide you and pointing you in the right direction there.
Okay, sounds good.
And you're gonna look into the meetings, the minutes at the meeting for May sixteenth, two thousand and seven as well?
Yep, yep.
And then we'll.
Note number eight, yeah.
Yeah, we'll look into that. And then, you know, so we're we'll we'll digest these plans a little bit and gather a little bit more information.
Okay.
Do you know, do you have any idea what it was before that time? Was this multifamily prior to it being switched over to condos or do we do we know?
Well, you know, the hit, the the history that I understand is that this is, it was once a wood, it was a mill. And somebody by the name of Rich Lyons, he converted them all to apartments.
Right.
No, to apartments. And then at some time, Paul Longill, he went through the the application and returned them, you know, converted them into condominiums. And which, you know, he he intended to sell them individually, two of which he did sell at one point, uh, but he was, he was the financer and apparently the the people defaulted and he ended up taking them back. So, but so there is, there is a record that shows that these were sold as condos at one point. Two units have have a history of being sold. So that's it, from wood, you know, mill apartment to condo is where is my understanding of it.
So that might explain, possibly might be part of the reason if the planning board didn't take action was if these were already multi-units and kind of basically it was already a multifamily with six units or five units. Why they might have felt like they didn't, they didn't require further jurisdiction, but that's obviously speculation. So hopefully those minutes will shed some, shed some light on that.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be interesting, sure.
Are are all of these units under ownership of other people or is this?
All, no, we we own them all. We own them all. You know, we, you know, we want to just make sure that it's, you know, you know, that, you know, the number six, you know, I would like, we'd like to get it developed so it's kind of it kind of cleans up the whole thing that if someday you'd meet myself or my kids or ever wanted to sell these units that, you know, we wouldn't have like a weird kind of a you know, buildings kind of sitting out there with the.
Not finished.
Yeah, not finished technically or not, you know, I don't know how to define it, but. It just seems like it's something that should, you know, that 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 should be a residence to me with it with a garage next to it. You know, I don't know. But.
Okay, um, then why don't we set a, maybe just a time limit that we'll, we'll get back to you within within seven days. Okay, so by this time next week, um, we'll have some better guidance for you.
It would, you be getting back to us with an email or verbally or meeting or how would you want to do that?
Um, I I guess I'd have to know whether staff has your contact information, I would assume.
Yep, yeah, they do.
Joanna has that, so maybe you can either have a another call or, um, you know, something similar, just a Zoom call or if we if we have to meet, we can always meet in in the planning office, although it's not really desired right now to obviously get together that way, but we'll we'll get communication to you somehow.
Okay. All right, Haven, great help. Really appreciate you having us. It was a learning experience. Thank you.
Okay, well, good. Well, uh, thank you, and we'll we'll try and be as assistant as possible.
Perfect. That's all you can ask. So thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Yep, you too.
All righty, bye bye.
All right. I guess I talked a lot. Sorry if I didn't have somebody else chime in at the same time.
So before I leave, is there, is there going to be any more discussion or is that it, you think?
I think Dirk's going to get his uh, his charger. You did this to us last time, too. That pops up and I keep panicking that it's my computer.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, I thought it was mine. I was actually trying to close the thing out. Yeah. All right, so I I'm gonna go ahead and leave if that's okay.
Uh, well, one sec before you do, just in case, I know Dirk is getting his charger, but he did mention, did anybody else have comment from the board? Anything that we didn't go over that would be helpful to the applicant?
I know Steph has looked through this, so she's online here. Me and her had a lot of emails over the last year.
Yeah. It was my understanding originally when I went through the plan that unit six, that parcel was a community parcel. Um, if you are saying that that is a a private parcel, then I think that changes the original communication that we had. It might, I'd I'd have to look through the original approval too. Um, I'm guessing from the that May sixteenth um, minutes. It's been a while since I looked through the file, so I apologize.
No, it's okay.
I I believe it was a site plan amendment or update when it went from apartments to condos. So we would just need to look and see exactly what was approved for that, that specific. It might be another site plan amendment. Um, I'd have to look.
You know, ju- just for my own clarity, what what what's a limited common area?
That is something I'd have to get back to when I haven't heard.
Yeah, because it, you know, if actually, if you, you know, I don't know if you can see this on this plane here, but if you look, I actually colored it out in the sense that each unit you can see has their own limited common area, and then there is common area. You know, for the benefit of all the units.
The limited common areas generally essentially, you think of it as a condo's own property, but they don't own the property. It's essentially they have rights to do gardening or something like that on it, and then your common area is that, is like where you would have a playground or something like that where.
Yeah.
Unit that pays into the association has rights to it, but the LCA is a way to make somebody in a condo feel like they have some degree of land that they technically have right over.
That's the way I understood it too. I just thought, you know, I was surprised to actually realize that's what was going on here. And I think that's what Steph was alerting to, that I was giving her the wrong information or the wrong impression until I realized what was going on when I studied the map, so.
They're similar, yeah, so they're similar, just depends on your condo documents, how how they were spelled out, and if there's any restrictions on the LCAs versus the general community space. So that might be laid out in the condo docs.
Okay, yeah, because they're quite large in some of these.
All right. Yeah, and I know, I don't know what, there would be requirements probably to go back to the state, because I know condos have to have a state approval too with.
To turn general's office.
Yeah, there's an RSA specific to condos, which I don't know if this sincerity in existence would just be an amendment or how that works, but that that LCA area, I saw that and was trying to figure that out, but like Mr. McKinnon said, that most likely is somewhere in the bylaws or in the condo docs that would have been created as to what the responsibility of those are. The tax maps are weird on this, too. I was trying to figure that out. Trying to find them. Well, I had to play around with it, but I got to it.
Okay, I I guess we still waiting for his charger?
I'm back. I mean, I I apologize for that.
All right, Derek, I kind of reopened it just because, uh, just to make sure that everybody else seemed like there might have been a few more comments.
Yeah, I was talking too much, so I run my battery down.
I did want to mention something about the septics. And yes, for for you, Mr. Cody, the 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 septics, there there are some possibilities out there that won't necessarily be economical cost-wise, but there there is, there are a couple types of septics that are used, especially on, say, uh, small lake lots where the the space is limited. Um, so there there are options out there. I just want to mention that to you as well.
Okay, great. Okay, that's what we thought, you know, we've looked at a lot of lake properties and we're surprised really how tight some of them are, where where they, where they get their septics laid laid out, you know?
Solutions is one of the the versions that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, maybe Scott can help us with that. All right, well, I guess I'll wait for the deck, the week, week, seven to ten days, maybe give you a little leeway if you need it. Yeah, get some direction back. That'd be really great.
Okay.
All done with, we all done with comments?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, guys. Have a great. Good night.
Yeah, sorry about that, Board. I didn't mean you to any concern about your own computers going dead.
Only unplugged once and replugged in.
Yeah, you got everybody scrambling for their, to click the close button.
Well, so I I plug in the back of my computer, but then, of course, the other cord that's supposed to go in the wall wasn't plugged in. Anyway, my problem. Okay, so I guess we're gonna talk, the next item on the agenda is reviewing the final drafts of the proposed zoning amendments. And let me just skip down to the the building height and grade amendment. I may have sent out an email earlier this week, or maybe just to some limited folks, but so after one of the planning board meetings we had or during one of the planning board meetings, maybe two times ago, because I wasn't at the last one. You know, we talked a little bit about the building heights, uh, towards the end and that the building department provided some input and the fire department provided a letter for input. And and really, there just didn't seem like there was enough time to really get that focused and dialed in uh, to get it coordinated between the two and and then have the board understand a lot of that, so. It it seemed like it would be that that would come off of any of the proposed amendments. I just want to confirm that that's the direction, and we'll just have to pick this up in twenty twenty one.
I think it makes sense, this is Mr. Veo. I think it makes sense. I don't want to rush it. You know, I I think I want to make clear to the chief, the fire chief and our billing and and officer, co-enforcement officer, that we take this seriously and, you know, I know Dale brought up a number of items for us, and it's not that we're trying to purposely not work on them or anything. It's that we're trying to be mindful of what we put through this year, um, that what we do, we have a lot of thought behind it so that we don't create more problems by implementing a fix.
Yeah, and I think the other portion was, uh, you know, we have discussed in the past that, you know, let's really focus on this wetland and stream um, and not provide too much for the public and lose their interest totally.
Especially with, this will be our first year on SB two, so there's mixed, mixed reports out there as to how that'll go. So I'm curious to see how this moves forward with that.
True, true.
Everything being valid now.
Yeah, good point.
Also, we think the, um, I think it's a good, good idea to to put it off also because maybe on the surface seemed like something that was going to be more cut and dry and maybe isn't quite that way.
Right, right. Yeah, I I had a conversation with, uh, with Dale and um, town administrator, um, and and yeah, there's, there's some ambiguity on some of the terminology, and we just want to make sure, you know, our ordinance will support what the amendment would be written for in terms of definitions and what's ground and what's grade and you know, what what is, you know, does it go to the second floor or is it to the eve height? So there's some nuances to it that we want to just make sure that we have those correct.
And if there's confusion, I have seen in the past where boards will actually include a small diagram. If if it seems like it's too hard, it would be a text. I've seen diagrams included. I know we don't really have any diagrams in our ordinance now. That might be something to consider if people are still having trouble visualizing some of those dimensions.
No, it's helpful. We have that. I think it's subdivision with with some things we have. It's appendixes for, uh, like cisterns especially and some of the fire type things, um, and the road base, I believe, the road designs. We have the showing like that, because I think you're right, that adds a lot of clarity sometimes where the the verbiage gets confusing, but a- again, my memory from this in the past as to why we never touched upon it or felt the need to go into it deeper was that, I believe the explanation was that it's, you know, it goes back to code. It goes back to whatever the code book is, um, for determining that that piece. So now that we're getting back from code that, and that wasn't the co-enforcement officer, um, that that's that he would like more more language in there, and I think it's a great time to add that in for, on the docket for next year, to make sure we get interested parties in place and do it thoughtfully and try to do it right.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, exactly. I mean, the the example here is that if it's set to a specific height, uh, it may prohibit two-story dwellings, you know, and and that's certainly, I don't think that's what we want to do in in our community of, you know, colonials and well, capes are one story, kind of. Okay, so we're gonna move on. We're gonna talk about the wetland ordinance and the draft that Steph circulated. And I guess just ask if there's people that have comments about it as written so far. Um, and tonight, we, remind me, Steph, we're gonna need to vote on this tonight. So that we can make a publication in the first hearing, which would be sometime in December.
We do have a little bit of wiggle room. Um, I think that if we, I mean, if you think they're good, let's send them. If there are minor changes, you can send them to hearing with those minor changes. If it's substantial, we'd need to, I'd need to review them. But we're we're ahead of schedule, so.
Okay, well, let's not dwell on it. So if there are some things we can move, then excellent.
I just had a couple of formatting things, just uh, on the wetland one, if uh, I can go through those.
Yeah.
Um, under section two, or no, that might be sorry, no, uh, number, section three, the new section three. Um, first, I didn't know, I was sure no disturb needs to have a hyphen in it. I don't know, it just looked weird when I was looking at it. No dash or hyphen disturbed, and then at the very end, just capitalize conditional use permit so that we're consistent with other places in the document. And then on number five, where we've added without a conditional use permit, I think we need a comma after that, just to continue that, uh, just formatting wise. What was my next one? Uh, number six, under conditional uses, at the beginning of the second sentence, uh, we capitalized conditional, but we should capitalize use permits there as well. And then my last one was, again, just num- number eight at the very end of the creek wetlands, just capitalized conditional use permit at the very end of that. Just so it stands out. So I got.
I have a couple of comments on both. This is Susan.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm looking at the um, stream protection ordinance, I'm sorry, stream protection overlay district first. Um, Steph had a question at the bottom of the page on the definitions, should we um keep the definitions in this article or included or included in the definition section? And I would suggest we do it in both areas, as we have done in the past.
I think we worked to clean that up last year, so that there weren't differences.
Steph, do you think it's just in definitions, like just the definition section now?
Um. Yeah, I I think that we worked to put all the definite, or as many as we could and were reasonable in the definitions section of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Um, so I just, there there are a couple of sections where it didn't make sense to do that, so I just wasn't sure um, how you felt about where the definitions for this new section should be.
Well, well, my opinion is it should be in both areas, so people looking up a definition won't have to go to that internal section to see what that meant, if if it was part of a conversation. Anybody still there?
Yeah, I could see leaving the definitions of the different order streams, uh, I definitely think those belong here, they don't apply anywhere else.
Okay.
Just the only issue with the def, you know, where we say buffer, if we bring, if we do bring that into general definitions, we might have to, this is more geared towards a sh- a stream buffer, and we would have to probably add stream buffer if we're gonna pull it into the general definitions, since buffer can apply to multiple things.
Well, it might also apply to um, vernal pools, if we decide to include that as well. So a buffer can be defined as an is a vegetative no disturb area. Around some sort of a wetland system, could could be a river, it could be a swamp, it could be a vernal pool.
Right, and that's what, yeah, like going back to the welling ordinance, you know, we do describe the 20-foot no disturb vegetated buffer.
Yeah.
Definition we have here, a buffer is more geared towards stream, so we either have to make it the definition of buffer in the general, you know, in the general definitions of the ordinance, we'd have to expand to include all of different types of buffers, but I hope that's gonna get too confusing for somebody reading buffer, and there's three different items in it.
Yeah, and we're we're really trying to make this a standalone, because otherwise we will have to also amend you know, the the full document of those definitions with this warrant. And my next, I was just gonna, I don't want to um, belabor the point on buffer, but while the town of Nottingham may not have them now, but there are landscape buffers, there's a number of other types of buffers that do occur in land use planning, and and I just, I don't want to get that confused either.
Yeah. I think where it's so few terms, it's okay if it lives here, like you said, because it's specific to this overlay.
But we do, like, to a good point, though, we do use buffer i- in the proposed well and conservation area update um, for the area around a vernal pool, so it would be cleaner to have that definition kind of combined, which would be easy enough, but as the chairman pointed out, you know, if one of these gets voted up, one gets voted down, then we have a definition that's incorrect or or out of sequence. The only other spot in the zoning ordinance that we've kept the definitions in the ordinance itself, language is the flood overlay district, seemingly enough. So, I I think it makes sense to, I like it being cleaner and putting these in definitions area, but I think it makes sense to have have it in the section and in the depths.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, we do already have a buffer definition, I just looked it up, so I think that using stream buff um, defining it with the current is a good, a good change.
Yeah, this this would be stream buffer.
Yeah.
Just because this definition that we're using for buffer definitely, you know, we use stream in it, and it really doesn't apply to even wetlands in a way.
So Susan, are you okay if it says stream buffer?
Yes, I think that that would be good.
All right.
So that's more fitting for um, just being here in this uh, in this ordinance.
Yeah.
Or whatever we call it. Uh, my my second comment is under administration, um, the line where it says required buffer width down to an absolute minimum of 50 feet, well, 50 feet is the size of a buffer for a first and second order stream, so there's no reduction there. 50 feet would be appropriate for a third order stream and up, and that would be reduced from 75. So my suggestion is for a first and second order stream to an absolute minimum of 25 feet. For a first and second order stream, which is half, and then 50 feet for a a third order stream and higher, which is a reduction of a third.
I I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and it it's maybe granted by the planning board, so if the specific circumstances, um, you know, doesn't say, like, a 25 would be not fitting, then we can always raise it.
Because that would give waiver cor- uh, waiver request, correct?
Yes, I would say waiver.
Yeah. So with that, Susan, it looks like that sentence that that, what you were just reading from, maybe needs to just be broken up, it's a pretty long sentence. As is, maybe that just needs to be broken up, just specify the 50 and 25?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So you, um, hmm, I'm just reading this again. Oh my God, it is a long sentence, yeah, it just needs to be stopped somewhere, or put in a um, a colon, so there's a pause. Or two. We can leave it to Steph.
I can word this if I'd like.
Basically change the beginning of the sentence, uh, the, you know, we could say any reduction of the required buffer width down to an absolute minimum of 50 feet for a third and fourth order or higher stream or 25 feet for a first and second order stream may be granted by the planning board upon presentation, blah blah, but we do need to find a spot probably to stop that sentence at some point and break it up.
Just take a step back, I'm sorry, so for the definition, the word buffer, you were talking about changing the word buffer to in the section to to stream buffer, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Stream buffer.
Yeah, there's a little bit of redundancy in that sentence, too, I think if if it can just get word smith, I think overall, if planning board is in agreement, if we're in agreement with the 25 and the 50, um, then we can have Steph just work that out.
Yep. I agree.
So under non-permitted uses, number two, where it says exception of structures necessary for the housing of pumps, shall we also include wells, because wells are structures?
Yeah, well's a pump. Well.
Are you thinking like a dug well?
It's a dug well with a
Not many of those are.
With a bucket and a rope.
I have a dug well.
With a bucket and a rope?
I have three, but the bucket and rope are missing.
Okay, if that if that includes, the pumps include wells, and that's fine by me. Number four, review by the cons- conservation commission will be requested, how about shall be requested?
I think we'd like to leave it into the planning board's responsibility.
All right, I get you.
Well, in my my opinion, will and shall are the are the same in this case, so if I see the word will, that means I think we're kind of more bound to it instead of may.
Oh, yeah, better, eh?
We can switch it to may.
No, I like will. Um, can we move on?
Sure.
Under permitted uses, number six, the new number six. Planting of new, and I'd like to add the word riparian, planting of new riparian vegetation. That riparian just means, you know, riverside, streamside. Because you could put native species in there, and then they're not appropriate for um, a buffer.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We change, uh, to go off of number six, so we change the language, it's a, we say native species to improve the buffering capability of the buffer. Is there another word for buffering capability?
Uh, we don't need the word improve, we could use um, maintain the integrity of.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Rather than improve.
Maintain or improve?
Maintain, maintain the integrity of the of the buffer, period.
Yeah, I would say that, I don't think we need buffering capability.
The buffer.
Yeah, that's what the buffer's doing anyway, we don't have to.
Yeah.
Integrity of the buff.
Yeah, species to to improve the integrity of the buff.
Period.
Improve or maintain, what was the final answer?
Just improve.
Improve, since we're saying new vegetation.
Okay.
Improve the buffer? Is that this, that's it, okay.
To improve the buffer or to improve the integrity of the buffer?
Integrity of the buffer, I think is what Susan said.
Yeah. Yeah, I had, yeah, I had maintain the integrity, but it doesn't matter.
Well, if you say improve, then you're expecting something better, if you say maintain, you're saying you're expecting at least as good as it as it was.
Right, right.
There is the difference.
Maintain or improve?
Yeah, I was gonna say you could just throw in or maintain, yeah. Doesn't hurt us either way.
Okay, ready to move on?
Yes, but I'm I'm looking at the second document, um, that
Can we stick, can we stick with this one for a second?
Okay.
Yeah.
This one, I'd love to get through the one, um, under this, on this page here, exemptions to setback provisions of section 11.2 of this article, is that correct? Where, I don't know if that's a nebulous section reference.
Um, that's a good question.
And then, the only other thing I had about this whole, this whole um overlay district proposal is, in the non-permitted uses, for, just to clean up the language, can we get rid of there shall be no, if it's non-permitted, there shall be no, so I think we can um, you know, non-permitted uses, driveways, parking areas, to permanent, yeah. That's how it is in in a few other spots in the zoning ordinance. There might be a couple of areas where it makes sense to keep it, but for the most part, I think that will just clean up the section a little bit.
Yeah.
So in, in all non-permitted news it uses, we are getting rid of there shall be no.
Correct.
Every item.
Yep.
Perfect.
I don't think they noticed the plastic bags of a lot of things in the world.
Sounds like tin foil.
Steph, did we need, I see your comment there on number four under non-permitted use, did we need to come up with some rewording of that, or do you think you, are you just gonna try and reword that portion of their number four?
Um, I mean, what do you guys think, I understand what it means, because I kind of have already worked on it, but I wasn't or if it ended up being clear, it didn't sound quite right. But I wasn't sure, um.
I was thinking you clean up the beginning of where you highlighted, and you could say will be requested and approval only granted if other options with less detrimental impact are not feasible, so you could remove and change approvals to approval. Yeah, will be requested. Oh, will be requested and approval only granted if other options. I think the will, the will
Will and the be?
Yeah, will and be, I think was just making it a little bit wordy.
How about we get rid of um, review by the conservation commission will be requested, period, and then approvals will only be granted uh, if other options worth, let's just, you know, make that a standalone sentence, because otherwise it might seem like
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Planning board's approval.
Yeah.
Planning board.
It was one of those things where I was staring at it for so long that I, it it all started to sound funny.
Okay, on anything else on stream overlay, let's let's bang out one of these.
Uh, last one, I promised, do we need to capitalize code enforcement officer at the beginning of administration? It was, uh, we changed it from planning board to code enforcement officer, sometimes that's capitalized. I don't know if we have any ordinance anywhere else.
Now, what do we, what do we normally say?
Uh, building department?
Well, yeah, I I don't know if we use code enfor, I just know, when I've seen code enforcement officer, it's generally a capitalized position, because they'll sometimes abbreviate it as CEO.
Uh, we use both capital and uncapitalized.
I'm always a fan of capitalizing, but
Let's do capitalized.
Ian wins.
How about building inspector, capital, capital, because that's what is, that's what it is on the uh, the town website.
Yeah, that's what the position is.
Mm-hmm. Actually, building, building code health inspector, but then it's shortened to building inspector.
Yeah, building inspector and code.
His title's building inspector on the on that site, so.
If you capitalize it, I'm happy.
So to be fair, though, so he's the building inspector, but he also functions as a code enforcement.
Yeah.
We're just going with building inspector, correct?
Awesome.
Well, it it probably is, just let's have one of those and not both, because who knows when we grow into a big city, that there might be a, both a building inspector and a code enforcement officer.
We'll amend it then.
And no, I'm not advocating that we're growing into a big city, just for any public that's listening, that's not my intent here.
Probably wants to raise our taxes, too.
All right. Steph, you got that clear?
Yeah, anything else on the stream protection overlay? No? Cool.
I, um, um, yeah, sorry, Steph. Um, there's co, there's the town code enforcement officer mentioned underneath the little chart of stream protection district. And then I also saw at the very end of the document, exemptions from regulations, um, number two, towns code enforcement officer. I didn't see it anywhere else, though, but it is in those two places.
Where was the second one?
The second one is right at the end, number two, under exemptions.
Okay.
Towns code enforcement officer.
Building inspector.
But yeah, you might have to do a, a search. Maybe just look for officer and see what pops up.
All right. And then we started with these couple of comments, but are there more comments on the wetland conservation area?
Yeah, Susan has one anyway. Um, hmm. Um, let me see. Um, item number six, conditional uses. I have non-critical wetlands, underlined. What does that mean? There's nothing in, in the zoning ordinance that defines critical wetlands.
Can you be more specific than six?
Lands conservation areas. Number one is description, two pollution control, three, 20-foot no disturb, four, non-conforming structures, five permitted uses A through G, and then six, conditional uses.
No, we do have, we do have critical wetlands defined, because we, that's what our town, we have instead of, uh, what's the other one? Prime wetlands. We never went through the prime wetland designation, so we have in our zoning ordinance, uh, under the current wetland conservation areas. We had, oh, it's, um, it's number, it's number eight, uh, it's number eight on this dirt, if you keep scrolling. There's our, our critical wetlands.
Oh, okay.
What we wanted to do, what the intent of putting this other piece in was to basically designate that, um, that these, these, the critical area are not subject to conditional use permits at all.
Yeah.
And I saw was just a definition for wetlands. And wetland con, an area. I didn't see anything for critical wetland.
It's at the bottom of this one. We have it currently. It's just renumbering.
Okay, but it's not in the, it's not in the big definition on dictionary.
Oh, not in our, uh,
No.
Not in.
Not in our definition definitions?
Right. It's not in the back.
It should be.
Okay, my point.
Yep.
Okay, so do you want to add critical wetlands, this definition on number eight, to the definitions section and keep it here as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, let me see. Um, um, let me see, I'm still on number six. I'm looking at E two in parentheses. And it says, "An itemized cost estimate shall be submitted for approval to the planning board's agent." Who's that? Is that the land use clerk?
That's what I understood it to mean. We can make that clearer if everyone's in agreement.
Can you just say planning board and whether that's the land use clerk or if for some reason the chairman has to pass it on? If you look at the planning board as just a.
It could just be to the planning board.
That makes sense.
Because sometimes we might, that sometimes depending if huge, you know, dirt gets his way and we become a city, then we're gonna have to have an engineer review that cost estimate, so. And might, the agent then might end up being a consultant. In that case.
So we'll just, uh, for approval to the planning board.
Yep.
Well, did you want to?
We can designate agents. We have it in a few different spots in the, in the zoning ordinance where it's the planning board or it's designated agent, so I think we've maybe unbeknownst to ourselves designated things like completeness review, uh, process used by the planning board and/or designated agent to ensure that all applications, a few other spots. But. So if we take out the, the agent part, that just means it would have to come before the planning board, and we'd at least have to have a review of it during a, a meeting, correct? So that's fine.
Yeah. Something makes sense.
Okay, next.
Um, that was it for me, just those little items.
And I just had two small, well, one small one and one, that's just a question. Uh, Steph, or I guess under the very beginning, B1A, where it talks about the description in the natural resources inventory map, wetlands map dated 5/27/99. Is that still accurate? Because when I look up, like, we have different maps online that S R P C has done for us, and we have a lens conservation and the natural resources, uh, inventory map. But it's not dated that anymore, so I didn't know if we should keep that date, amend the date, or add language, uh, like we do for, like, RSAs or, or some of the other areas, um, as amended or as updated.
Um, yeah, has it, has it been updated since 99?
Well, that's where I'm kind of confused on. I don't know if, what that date is referring to, if it's referring to the map? Or some, or some inventory that was done in 99?
Well, there was a natural resources inventory that the master plan refers to. Um, I don't know the date of that off the top of my head.
Now, the master plan would be probably outdated as well, so it's probably the most updated map that we have hanging on the wall.
We have, we have, so online, these are, we have these online under, um, about, and then maps, if you're on the town page. There's a natural resources map that, that does show, um, uh, mapped critical wetlands. And I'm trying to get to the date.
This is.
Do not see data. 2014 is the closest, but that's not a date. That's the file date.
Um, I'd have to look, I can ask, um, the GIS planner for the layered date.
I didn't know, like, as amended would be appropriate on this?
Yeah, probably. Um, so the wetland conservation areas, as Heron defined, are shown on the wetlands map of the Nottingham Natural Resources Inventory as amended? Is that what you're suggesting?
Or dated 5/27/99, yeah.
Or updated.
And, and as amended.
And as amended, okay.
Yeah, because I, I would be concerned, I mean, in six, 10 years from now, if this is still in here, we probably have a different map.
Okay.
An updated, different date for a map.
I hope so.
The only other thing I have on this is I like conformity with numbers. Um, so under number three, which talks about the, the, the vernal pool buffer, which we should probably call a vernal pool buffer, um, if we're gonna add, keep buffer definitions going, is we go at 20 feet. I don't, I think there was reasoning that, there was supportive of that, but I didn't know if we should just do 25, just to keep the 25-foot seems to be a pretty consistent measurement for our setbacks and buffers and all that. Um, and we've already established that in a lot of ways, the vernal pools are um, higher priority than, than certain wetland areas. So I wouldn't want to go less restrictive.
I would support 25 feet, but, um, usually the term vegetative, vegetative buffer is what I've seen in most ordinances, not a vernal pool buffer. If that's, if you're thinking of like literally calling it the vernal pool buffer, um.
I think we can just call it a buffer around a vernal pool. Doesn't have to be a vernal pool buffer.
I know, I was just looking at, through the zoning ordinance, the ordinance, when like, and when Miss Kassal had pointed out that we have buffer kind of sporadically in there, um, we have, we have it listed a bunch of different ways, you know, in different sections. We have a buffer zone for multifamily developments, uh, 100-foot buffer to critical wetlands, the landscape buffer. Another buffer for open space, and then buffer specifically in definitions, um, that has its own definition. Land area with, within which adequate vegetation is maintained or provided to visually separate or screen one use from another and/or to minimize potentially negative impacts in surrounding areas. So I don't think we necessarily need to, I think that last part of it captures what we're doing with these buffers.
Yep. So because, because it mentions vegetation in that definition, you think removing that vegetated term?
Is that what you're? No, no, I, I think that's good. I just didn't know if we needed to, we're in the other ordinance, we were talking about doing a, a stream buffer. We call it a stream buffer. I didn't know if we wanted to call it a vernal pool buffer. But I'm fine without it.
So we're gonna scratch the word vegetative? Is that what the result of that was?
I think we're gonna leave it.
Okay.
Or, yeah, no disturb buffer. I, I guess we don't need the vegetative, right? If it's an area of no disturbance.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Agreed to move it to 25, or change to 25 feet? Is that?
If, if, can I make a comment?
Yes.
This is Susan.
Yes, Susan.
My, my, our house, not my house, our house is 20 feet wide from front to back, and I'm looking at it right now, and it seems more than adequate to protect a vernal pool that might be, I don't know, 10 feet across. And then you, what you have with, um, 20 feet going around that, that's a really big substantial area. And I think that 25 feet might just be a little bit of overkill. And it's really not going to offer any substantial, um, additional protection.
I could go either way.
You know, this is such a big thing for Nottingham to include protections for vernal pools.
Right, I guess my thought is, you know, the little bit more distance we give is probably better, because this is a kind of a critical area, um, in that a lot of the, the species that utilize them are, are coming from further, further out. It's not like the species are utilizing just that space. They're, they're coming generally from further. And, and the vernal pools tend to provide habitat. I think that it's, in a lot of cases, more sensitive than, uh, some of the, the streams that we're protecting with, you know, with a greater standard.
Yeah.
Plus, I like, I like 25, just because everywhere else we're 25, 50, 75. It's, it's an easier increment to see, uh, because the vernal pool is gonna be of, of, most likely a poorly drained soil. So it's already gonna have a 25-foot line shown. This will keep it from adding a, a second or a 50-foot line. So never mind, it's not 25. I don't know, I just like the interval better.
Do we need to take a vote?
Well, let's, let's put it this way. Uh, I guess. Uh, yeah, I guess we should take a. I guess, who would be in opposition of moving it to 25? If, if, if there's any buddy that opposes giving a wider buffer?
I, I just worry that it's gonna be too much, because that gives a diameter of 50 feet for, for a 10, um, foot vernal pool. That drives up.
It is restrictive. It definitely is restrictive. Do we know what this, does the state provide a buffer? For vernal pools?
I don't, Steph would, could research, but I think it's town to town.
It is town to town. I'd say the most, I mean, I will say that every ordinance, most of the ordinances that I review do stick to the increments of 25, 50, 75, 100. But I mean, ultimately, you know, we don't have to stick with that.
Well.
I'll go first.
Let, let's, let's go ahead with 25, and, and, and I guess Steph, if you want to just look into that a little bit more, um, but for, for purposes of this moving forward, let's, let's have 25. Unless, unless there's real opposition, which I didn't hear.
Hold on one second. I'm just on the thing from the Army Corps of Engineers on vernal pool best management practice.
Oh, good.
Well, Steph looks that up. Um, any other comments on this? So if we're gonna move that to 25, we'll consider that, um, and then the rest of this is just some verbiage or, or some sentence structure. I, I guess I'm getting to the point, are we, are we okay with these as minor revisions that Steph handles? And, and voting on these tonight, or do we want to, which, which would be my preference? That way they'll come off of our table for now.
I don't think there's anything significant enough not to push it forward.
Mm-hmm. I, I agree.
Okay, can someone make a motion to that?
I move that we prepare with edits suggested in May, um, the amendments or the amended wetland con, in areas. And, um, articles Nottingham Stream Protection Overlay District for presentation at a public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second by Gary?
Yes.
Uh, some discussion on that. I guess we'd want to know when the public hearing would be. So Juliana, do you have the next? It doesn't have to be its own hearing, right? It, it can coincide with regular business.
Yes, our next meeting date is December 9th. Do we want it then, or do we want to go anywhere?
Uh, let's December.
So December 19th?
Yep, let's get them done before the end of the year.
Okay.
Good idea. Thank you.
All right, so then, um, that public hearing will take place uh, December 9th, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So that motion and second would be for the December 9th meeting. Um, we just do a roll call vote.
Confirm, so that's saying that that would be our first hearing date, public hearing date on these final amendments?
Yes.
Steph, do you have time to get me the language to put in that public hearing notice?
For December 9th?
Yeah, so I'll need it, um, two weeks prior.
So you need it next week? So you need it next week?
Yes, that would be it.
Um. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Steph.
Yeah.
So let's vote on that, um. Ed Veale?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yeah.
Uh, Leanne Gass?
Yeah.
And that's it. Dirk is yes. So these will be posted, um, and published for the first hearing. For December ninth.
And then. Uh, follow up to that, do you want to, um, send these out for legal review now as well concurrently?
Yeah, once Steph gets those, um, edits made up.
I didn't, yeah, so just want to make sure we give the guidance to, to Joanna or, or Steph that we can, uh. Once we have this, once we have Steph's language, when we post the public hearing, we can also send it out for review by town council.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Does that normally get a vote?
Sending it to town council?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a requirement.
Um, Buzz has his hand up.
Yes, Buzz. Buzz, you have, you have the floor.
No, I'm all set. I hit the wrong button by accident.
Were you raising your hand or just waving?
I was just waving. Just, just letting you know I'm still here.
All right, good. Uh, okay, I guess we're on to our next one, which is review and approve the twenty twenty one application meeting schedule. I don't know that I downloaded that. I'd like to put that up. I guess, does anybody have any comments about the?
Joanna, do you have that?
I do.
Can you, are you able to share that on the screen for us? Because Joanna made a, a point where we had one of those, because of the way SBT works in our town. Thing is, our March meeting may have to be changed.
Okay.
Okay. It is up. So Ed, you had a suggestion.
So I didn't know, so we have it in our bylaws and I think it's required, um, that for that first meeting in March, it's, it's no business and we elect officers. Uh, I didn't know if the board would want to instead do a meeting from six thirty to seven for, um. Election of officers and housekeeping and then do our regular meeting from seven to. You know, whatever, instead of having the March twenty fourth meeting. Or we can keep it as is.
At, at the last time we did that, we only had half an hour and we did not get any further than electing officers. We never, we never got to, um. What's it called? Our protocol of conducting business or, or whatever.
Was I running that meeting?
I don't remember.
I'll say yes.
This year, no. Because it keeps, we keep kicking it down the road. Procedures, yeah. But I'd like it to stand alone and it doesn't have to be a long meeting.
I'm by me.
Rules of procedure, that's what it is.
And bylaws.
And by.
Okay, so, uh, do we have a? Motion to approve this? Calendar?
Chairman, I move that we approve the planning board, um, the Nottingham Planning Board. Twenty twenty one, uh, public hearing application deadline schedule as shown.
Is there a second for that?
Okay.
That second was from Leanne, thank you. And I'll just do a roll call. Ed Veale?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon? Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
And Leanne Gass?
Yeah.
This is our calendar. Now, let's go around the room for staff and board updates. We start with. Ed.
At this time, sir.
What?
I'll, I'll wait to interrupt someone else later.
I was gonna, I was thinking about just putting you last so you wouldn't interrupt anybody. Um, Ian, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Uh, Mr. Anderson?
Just one thing, um, the staff original has a, the quarterly meeting. Commissioner being, uh, December third. And the focus is on. Uh, resiliency and highlighting some of the economic development and environmental planning programs. And current happenings. So I'm hoping to make that because that's an afternoon meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Sue, Mooney?
No, nothing new.
Go ahead. Uh, Robert, Davies, Buzz, you have anything new?
I'm all set. I am all set.
Leanne?
Nope, nothing new here either.
Uh, Joanna?
Uh, the newest, uh, update is that the town offices are now back to, um, appointment only. So that's the new, new going on there. And I'm attending the NHMA conference this week, so today, tomorrow and Friday.
Thank you for doing that.
Some good stuff there.
Steph, do you have anything?
Nothing. Nope.
Okay.
And then Joanna, just to review, can you recap for us what we have coming up? Do we have anything on our December thing besides zoning ordinance?
We just got an application in on Monday, uh, for a subdivision, so I will be getting that out. Um, if not this week, next Monday, um. And other than that, um, the Mitchell Road case has attended the zoning board last night, um, and they're continued. So you're not going to be hearing from them still for a little bit. That's it.
Nothing, nothing on the guile, application?
Um, no, nothing more on the guile yet.
Okay.
Um, I have a feeling that'll be coming soon too, though. Uh, the other one was though, um, the. Route four. One should be coming back to you guys in December two, right? Have to look that up.
The one they were waiting for the DOT permit on?
Um. I think so, but I think that they were tabled to, or not tabled, but continued to the first meeting in December.
That's what I was trying to find my notes on, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm not in my office, so I don't have that on my fingertips to see it.
And then we have a set of minutes that are in the site walk.
I think we.
Those.
Those.
Ready to go?
And Dirk, one more thing is, um, any precision on the legal review? On the condo docs?
Of the condo docs, yeah, I sent you an email. Earlier today.
Yeah, and you said, um, possibly discussed tonight.
That was, I think that was, that was me, but I think Dirk responded maybe it was just to me. It was a. You were going to draft something.
Right, so we just received, just so everybody is understanding this is that, um. So we've just received some review comments from the attorney on some condominium, um, documents that were submitted. And we'll just send a letter or draft a letter, um, of those comments. To the applicant for revisions of their condo documents.
I apologize, I got the two messages confused.
Okay. So we, we on to minutes? We good?
Do you, do we still have the site walk minutes to do? Or it's all set?
Well, it's listed on the agenda.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
How convenient.
So Mr. Chairman, I move, uh, to approve October twenty first, two thousand twenty site walk minutes.
I'll second that.
Is that Ian?
Yep.
Uh, okay. I'll take a roll. Ed Veale?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yeah.
Leanne Gass?
Yeah.
And all vote yes. Great. That takes us to the end of this, um, planning board meeting. So, uh. If there's nothing else, I'd have a motion to adjourn.
All right, so moved.
All right, well. Motion second. Everybody press the little hand wave. And then we'll get out of here. Thank you, everybody, for, uh, for sticking with this and, uh, we'll see you. In two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yep. Bye.